Director of Prail?
President.
President.
Director Jope?
Here.
Director Perry is not present.
There he is.
Yes, I have heard from him.
Are you present?
A number of students that are art teacher Megan Erdman. She submitted their artwork to a like a virtual art show for the state art teachers association. One of our first graders was was selected and you can see that art right there on your on your notes and paper there. And that first grader's name is Sophia Fadilla and so congratulations to her. And then finally, we have a third grade teacher named Jordan Ambig who received a grant from the Farm Bureau to bring tadpoles, butterflies and baby chicks to her class. We also have two first grade teachers that are literally bringing learning to life by incubating duck eggs. So a lot of grants and things that we're trying to create unique experiences for our students. And my my own son is in one of the first grade classes and he just loves it. He's he's telling me all about the life cycle of the sort of, you know, the process that it goes to incubate an egg and how and all that stuff. So the kids really enjoy it.
The Tollivers do not want any ducks after they hatch. So we took chickens the last time.
Thank you.
I think part of your contract.
I just know they'll be coming home with a box.
They either gonna go to your place or hers.
A more likely, they live in town.
Well, I was thinking about the vets ones.
No, they'll die.
Well, we don't have living creatures in our village besides students, teachers and stuff, but.
Yep.
All state speech, Katie Stevens received an all state nomination for individual speech this year in poetry. It's a huge honor because only 11 people were nominated in the Northeast District, which went through the votes. Mrs. Tapper was awarded the 2020 AA FCS National Teacher of the Year Merit finalist. There was three finalists in the U.S., so there's a handout with that to give you more information. Then we have our National Honor Society members who are inducted on Sunday, 11 new members this year. Ari Lyman, Hannah Sampson, Caitlin Sampson, Megan Sampson, Olivia Anderson, Jensen Cooper, Alora Lewis, Ashley Ramirez, Kayden Stevens, Emma Tool, and Claire Cancel. And the picture of them there, the mask was only on for 30 seconds. And then, of course, this is the craziest time of year at the high school, so I got a lot of dates to keep in mind. If you have seniors or, you know, prom is not just for seniors, but so prom's May 1st, the grand march with the vehicles we back. So that'll be held at 7:00 P.M. on May 1st. The prom attendees can drive up to the main entrance to the gym. Each attendee will need a driver to take them up there and then they'll walk up the front entrance. As tradition has set before, and then the vehicles will be moved over to the parking lot across the street. People that want to watch just need to spread out outside. I've been told in the past that they'll even kind of go around the corner, that sort of thing. And then pictures will be taken right before they go in the doors and then the the students will go inside and enjoy their evening. May 19th is going to be our award ceremony for seniors. And then only parents can attend that, masks must be worn. More details about exactly the times and the meals and all of that stuff. In all, like the church typically does a ceremony before that as well. All those details will come here in the near future. Then May 20th is the senior breakfast and the community service day. We still have openings for many projects that might need to be done for the senior class to help out in that way. So you can contact Brenda Deal, the high school counselor, if there's something that anybody knows about that would could be done. May 23rd is commencement. It's going to be at 2:00 at the football field. If it's outside and weather is good, there'll be no limit on guests, masks are suggested. If it does rain though, we're going to move inside to the elementary gym. If that's the case, then we're going to limit six members or six guests per family, not per student, per family, and then masks will have to be worn. So I'm going to make the call the night before.
Yeah, we'll get plenty of notes. My question with that is if we hold it outside, we have room for all four members of the state?
You guys can totally be on stage, I'll go up and let girls know.
Last time I, I mean, unless we add more, we'll have to work on that. So we can be within the speed, so.
Yeah, CDC guidelines.
I don't remember in my mind, it seems like a smaller. As of now, we'll plan on normal, but.
I'm fine with not being there.
We'll have. We want you there.
I missed not going last year, it's kind of enjoyable.
I liked it, but it was hot.
We're getting a can if we brought in, right?
Yeah. No, it's spring, it should be better.
Thank you.
Scott left notes for it, the only thing you can read them, the only thing that, I mean, most of it is testing and when we're doing our testing dates, but it says the track season starts tomorrow at Humboldt, that has been canceled because of COVID, so.
Next item is the comic cards, which we have done. Item number six, conflict of interest acknowledgement. And as usual, I.
I have one.
You have one?
Oh.
The next item will be approval of the proposed agenda.
Make a motion.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the proposed agenda. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number eight, the consent items and did we have these additional ones?
Those are just. Those are just.
Notice transfers. Okay, so the consent items, that's put it.
So moved, second.
Been moved in second to approve the consent items. Are there any questions or discussion?
It's like there's a lot of shoes to fill.
Yeah, there's a lot of. A lot of what?
Shoes to fill.
Yeah, we're starting to piece it together by next month, I hope we have a lot of them. One of the things we're running into is we have people in district that are interested in moving into some of the positions that are opening. But once you do it, they move and you have to wait five days and advertise the next one. And then if somebody moves into that, then you wait five days. So we're kind of in that pattern of trying to piece it together at all the buildings. So it's it's a slow process.
Is it on par with what a normal year?
Yeah, we, a couple of years ago, we started getting our contracts as early as we could. A lot of schools don't even have their contracts coming in until the end of April.
Gotcha.
But because it's so hard to fill positions, we, the negotiations done, we're going to get them off, so we're going to keep coming back and stuff.
That teacher leader, TLC?
Yep.
Is that just a full-time position or is that teaching in addition to that, there are?
No, well, there's actually four. There's a person that oversees, not really the program, but kind of is district-wide and has the tech part of it. And then you have one in each building and so that is the one that's at high school.
Okay, so somebody potentially could move into that position.
Those positions are some of them we're trying to fill. So then you advertise it for five days and if you have somebody want it, then you gotta advertise the next position for five days and interview those people. So that's why it takes longer.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number nine, public hearing on the 2122 budget.
Josh, do you have any comments online?
Nothing.
Okay.
Same question, how long do we need? We have no questions. Can proceed.
Yep.
So item number 10, adoption of the 2021, the 2122 budget.
As we discussed last month, our tax rate will drop $1.44 per thousand. We're also dropping the income surtax rate from 7% to 1%. Pretty big.
And that's.
Page 23, right?
You paid off the bond.
You paid off the bond. Last year, we we paid off that bond early, so we have the bonding capacity if we need it, starting February 2022. But because we did a double payment, now we don't have to worry hardly any more. So the majority of it is that. We did go back and put some more in management just to balance that, last year we dropped the management, so. We're glad you're great with all those numbers. Our property values go up too, which, you know, once your property values go up, it it brings in more money, so. The one thing we're always going to fight is if we continue to seek growth, you're going to have new students come in and then you're going to have to get the cash to make up for it for one year. And then your cash reserve will hit a max and then we can't tax it and then the next year it drops down, you gotta tax it. You try to keep that from wobbling a whole lot. That's, I don't see that coming with the bond now, but that's always something we kind of got to be careful of is is making sure that doesn't jump in and out. And this is kind of off topic, but not, what are our student numbers look like now for this year? You talk to my principals, we'll tell you that we've grown a little bit. Why don't you say that over the air? It's hard to tell because we get all the, you're registered, you know, all the kids are coming in, but they know the kids that are leaving don't show up until you do those state reports to see where they reported and where they went. My gut would tell me we're probably up 10 to 12 this year, district-wide. From the beginning. From the beginning. That's what I, and that's what I meant as far as. I think we'll see an increase in enrollment next year, but COVID, you never know. I mean, we we will have kids that did not come back to school this year at the beginning, but I think will probably come back to.
Before we go too far, we need.
I was gonna say, yeah. I'll make the motion to approve the 2122 budget.
Been moved in second to approve, adopt the 2122 budget. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Item number 11, the fiscal year 20 audit report.
You received electronic versions of this, Tracy got a version to review, John said in on the meeting with us. Tracy, you can comment too, but it was mainly your standard stuff, segregation of duties, whichever school district gets. Your numbers are always affected a little bit by unfunded retirement, which is something the state pushed down a few years ago. But everything was good and then in my head, you say so too, John, I mean, so they didn't throw up any red flags.
No, and I just asked them, I mean, if it's, if there are things we're doing as much as we can on the segregation of duties, because that's something, I mean, I see in my job too with small banks all the time and and it sounds like we're doing what we can to keep it as, you know, separate as possible, given the circumstances, so.
Again, this one, we need a motion to.
Make a motion to accept the audit.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the audit. Basically, what it amounts to is the segregation of duties. They want us to have one secretary that's responsible for each item. And, you know, we're just not a big enough district to be able to do that. You know, and they understand that, but that's just the way their methodology works. There's a lot of things in the audit that, you know, we're watching paint dry, but, you know, if you if you go through there, you can see the best would be to contrast where we were a few years ago. Because it's a balance sheet, just like you would have in your business. And we have more debt now because they forced us all to assume the obligation for IPRs. So we're showing a lot more debt than we ever have in the past because we're responsible, we could be responsible for the IPRs cost for all of our employees, present and past. And that was never there for years and years. So every school district took a big hit when that came out. But if you look at the progress from year to year, that's more of a telling sign. You know, we have, you know, done a good job of managing the board and the administration has done a good job. So we're not going backwards and that's what's really important. If you go to a bank, that's what they're going to tell you, they want you to show positive movement and that's, the district has done a good job of that for the last few years.
I was gonna say, and you also get written up for a conflict of interest because we do business with J and J, which is again, something pretty, you know, simple, but yet they have to cite it kind of thing, and I mean, we're aware of it.
It's like 21,000.
It's a, it's a pretty low amount.
Is it? We'd rather go there and we'd run it over to Pat Manas when she's sub here too.
Yeah, it actually moved up in the last year. And if you really want excitement, you could sit on an audit sometime and listen to it. Spell done again.
You're not selling it very hard.
Yeah.
He tried to get out of it, but I was on vacation, so he didn't have a choice.
Good week to take.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 12, administrative billing project change order.
Okay, you have two, they don't amount to much, it's a $1,400 change order, page 25 is where they're talking about them. We actually talked about some of them last time and this is the paperwork coming through for it. Some are the clock infills. This one's not that way, but if you go into my office, when they put the clocks and they just punched holes in the wall and so there's a gap from where they, so you gotta have a mason come in. And the ones upstairs were, we put plates over the ones we could, but some were busted out too much. So I actually had the bricklayer laying the brick in there so it looks good. And then the other one is just drywall in the shaft to make sure it meets the fire rating. I would recommend you approve both of those. Motion to approval.
Been moved in second to approve the change orders. Are there any questions or discussion?
Is that project still on?
I was gonna say, how's it going?
We're looking at end of May, halfway through June, they're going to do the checkout that first week of June and, not the first week really, the second week. And that's when I'm officially on vacation, so I asked to maybe move it back a week.
What week's that?
June 5th through 12 or something, I'll be back by then, yeah. I hope it's warm.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 13, purchases in excess of 25,000.
Okay, I have some purchases here I'm going to ask for your approval on and then we'll see if we're actually buying it. It runs into those S R funds, S R 2 is what we're working with. In order to spend the money on anything over $5,000, you have to get approval from the state. So far, they have approved very, very little and I'm on the fourth attempt trying to go through. I went to the A A meeting, I asked and they're all getting the same response right back. The Chromebooks and the licenses, I think we will get through, I don't see that being a problem. The online registration software, they finally went through and said, well, this form isn't for that, now you gotta contact a person, they don't know how to do that. I've never got a response back on. The router, the cameras, I just, when I was talking to John, they just denied that one today, wanting more information. That is actually for the cameras in this building and the cameras we use to tell for social distancing. If, and we do it on the buses as well, if there's people in the lunchroom, we can go and get on the camera and say, we all sat together and there's where we can do the the quarantine's coming out of that. Cleaning equipment will be approved, but those are purchases over 25,000. With cleaning equipment, where you used to do like some of our floor cleaning, you had one that you could share between the three buildings. We're doing it more and more often, so this allows to have one in each building, just so you have it ready.
Technically, that's under 25.
Online registration software, is that for school enrollment?
Okay, so last year we did, well, do we need a motion and a second first? I'll make a motion to approval.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the purchases over 25,000.
Okay, so last year we did a modified version because we always did the, it was an, I hated as a parent, it didn't modify anything. All I did was print it off the sheet myself, filled it all out by hand and put it back in. Because of the complexity of it, I don't think we got all our free and reduced apps back there. So now you can get a extended version and it costs 7,500 a year that you're supposed to be able to go on and fill out every single form online and you don't have to do anything, paper, pencil. And hopefully by doing that, we'll get the accurate numbers because even your S R money, your title money, all of that's based on your free and reduced lunch. Well, when you have no registration, which we'll have to talk about going into next year, and all your lunch is free because of S R, there's no need to fill it out. So then your free and reduced lunch numbers drop and then all your grants and stuff that are based on it go down, so.
So it's only, is that it?
I'm doing a three-year subscription.
That's what I was, okay, gotcha.
Just because of the amount of money.
Right.
I gotta spend it somehow.
Right.
Unapproved things, so.
Gotcha.
And some of those, like the cameras, how it reads is if it's over $5,000, you have to get permission. Well, the cameras themselves aren't over 5,000, but the complete system to make it run is. And I don't want to have them put it in and then come back later and say, well, now we're not going to fund it, now you gotta fund it out at a different source. So I'm making sure I have approval before I purchase it. Is that software that'll run this building and all the other buildings as well or just?
Which one?
For the cameras? Yeah, it's really, well, there's two different things on that. It's the addition of this and your door accesses, okay? And then the second part is on your buses, updating and and doing what we have on buses, because some of them don't have it. And some of it is very, very difficult, so.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 14, extending the COVID leave to the end of the year.
Yeah.
So we put in the governor's plan at the first part, or not the governor's, the government, the federal government, and it was that everybody got 10 days of COVID leave. And that, I mean, there was a tier, if you had a kid get it, you know, or if somebody independent got it. We ran that till about February and then it expired. They said you could voluntarily extend it and for businesses, if they do it, they get a tax credit back for the money they spent. We're not a business, there's no tax credit for it. But COVID did not get out of the way and will still happen. Where we're sitting right now, I just want to extend the exact same program till the end of the year. Nobody gets another 10 days any of that, but just to get us through this school year and then when we get back next school year, we'll examine where we're at. So I would ask that you extend current, our current practice through the end of the school year.
Which is just the 10 days?
Which is, well, it it's a form, but it's 10 days, like if I get COVID, I get 10 paid days. I don't, it doesn't go against my sick days. If I'm out longer, it goes against my sick days. If I'm quarantined, I get 10 days, but if I'm quarantined and use six of them and then get COVID two months later, it's still only 10 days. You know, I'm I'm maxed at 10 days of what I can do and this does not restart the 10 days, it it's just 10 days of insurance, so if you're involved in it. I'll make a motion to continue our practice.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue the current practice through the end of the year. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 15, alternative diploma.
Heidi, do you want to explain what we're doing with the health two?
So the alternative diploma is something that we've had, I know about. In the past, students would have to take Health One, which is a requirement of the state and that's the regular diploma. They'd also have to take Health Two. Health Two is only offered once a year, this year it was offered in the fall. And so we've got students that need the alternative diploma, but didn't, we, they didn't know about using this choice because at that point, you know, they were going for the regular diploma. And then it kind of came down to crunch time here in about February, that it was time to make a different choice. So they didn't have the opportunity to take Health Two. In addition to that, with our numbers increasing, we're going to have to eliminate Health Two next year anyway. Because I need that teacher to teach Health One, because we're going from two sections of Health up to four next year. So it was, it's gonna have to come up anyhow, but it would benefit the significant number of students to be able to have the alternative diploma option this spring. There's a lot of kids that we had to use like online classes and stuff like that to get credits and things like that.
The other side of that is a few years ago, when I first came to Health Two as a graduation requirement and we ended it because there was really no reason for it. And if you look at it from a history standpoint, it seemed like years ago, they were trying to cut a position and they put in where you had to take Health Two because then it made fourth classes for somebody to teach. We just don't have it in our curriculum, I mean, we don't have the time to teach it anymore, so.
What is in Health Two?
I honestly do not know what's in that class. I mean, Health One covers your CPR, it covers all your, you know, like mental health. They do a lot on the depression and different things like that, suicide. They do the the sexual awareness and prevention and STD prevention unit. So they they hit all the really essential pieces in Health One. Like I said, the kids get certified in CPR process too. So I'm not, I honestly don't know what Health Two is in, what, because like I said, it's only offered one time a year, that's what it was. And I don't remember last year which semester it fell in, if it was actually second semester, if the kids didn't get to finish it or not, I'm not really sure. But this year it landed in the fall. And scheduling was kind of a mess this year because one, it was my first time using infinite campus to do that. And then on top of that, we only had the freshman class register for classes before we closed, so I kind of had to go off the year before and make it up and and then do a lot of fixing and we came back in the fall and the kids actually said, no, I want this instead of that.
By leaving it, it does not allow, if I'm a senior and I've met all the state requirements, me to get the alternative diploma because I can't teach the class right now. You know, if I have a pass, some of my electives this time, but I have enough credits, that's the the hind part.
Yeah, because they, the request is not to lower the number of credits. What I did was I took, it's just one credited health, so that's the required health course, and then just put that extra credit in the elective category. So it doesn't lower the number of credits at all, it just shifts to what is the demand.
Okay.
And it meets the state requirements because all the core classes, the English, social studies, math assignments. All of that, the health and the finance and the careers, of course, those are all state requirements, so.
So do we have a motion to approve the change for the alternative diploma?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the change, recommended. Are there any questions or discussion?
So it's going away completely, not just for next year?
Health Two.
Health Two?
Yep.
Any other questions?
How many, was there a lot of people in it this year or none?
No, typically it's just, like if a kid knows that they're going to do the alternative law, but, I mean, sometimes you've got kids that come in, like the end of their junior year, you can start having those discussions. So with some kids, you know, you can have those discussions. This year, we we brought kids in early and said, look, this is an option, this is the way you should go. And we had like five kids say no. And now it's getting down to the wire and I think some of those are going to have to say, well, maybe so. You know, because we try to show them and, you know, we talk to them about, you know, where you want to go when you leave here. If you're going to the job market, if you're going to Iowa Central, if you're getting like a tech type degree, you know, you want to be a welder or whatever, that diploma is absolutely just fine. Want to go to a four-year university, different conversation, but it's definitely an option for a lot of kids. It's a good one, really, they get everything they need when they can get out there and do what they want to do.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 16, and early graduation requests.
We have one early graduation request and this is for next year, they complete at the end of this year, correct?
No, I think that one is for a kid who would graduate at the end of.
A semester, okay. And I would recommend you approve that as long as, I mean, we approve the request as long as they meet the required one, so thank you.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the early graduation request. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Board member report. Not a very exciting group right now. Superintendent.
Everyone have one item on this that they keep talking about ESER three. Today, we had a meeting, a Zoom meeting at eleven o'clock. They told us our allocation. Our allocation is one point seven million. We will get two-thirds of that within by June first, and the other third will come back in the next year. Three hundred and forty thousand of that has to be spent on catching kids back up. Um, we will look at interventionist in our buildings for it. We will look at some summer school. So far, everybody's having a hard time getting anything approved out of the money, but it's a huge chunk of money. Some of the things they talked about was construction and ventilation. They've not approved any of those that I know of. Part of the problem you run into is you have to use a Davis Bacon rule. Davis Bacon says that you pay a prevailing wage set by the government to the workers that are on it. So it's, if you do a project, it could be twenty to fifty percent more. So which really limits what you can do. Um, we will still look at a few of those things. It's something that my building committee and I are gonna have to talk about on, on what you can do with that. When you're dealing with ventilation is, can we do something with the windows at the high school to try to get some ventilation in there and also make that more of a modern look? Because even if we, where we sit right now, even if we go to do something for the high school, you're not getting rid of that building because you're, you're too close from having to spill into the classrooms, um, with the bonding capacity that you have. And the middle school's in the same boat. The middle school took out a bunch of windows a long time ago and, and boarded it up, but that started to age out. Can we do something with the ventilation that way too? And then it just depends on how far you can stretch your dollars to get a project like that though.
And that all requires approval?
Yeah.
So that's a lot of money if you're not, if you're struggling to get approvals.
They put it in and they were adding the ventilation system with air conditioning. They said, you apparently don't have air conditioning. We can't do it. So that, I mean, that's just kind of the answer of why you do it. That's what I was gonna do at the middle school.
Yeah.
Can you look at ventilation? We have an air conditioning system, but it, it doesn't move air like you want. But if it's not there, you can't have it. And you can't replace it. It can't supply it. It's gonna be very difficult to spend. We have five hundred thousand this round and one point seven million next time. So far, I'm over four at any project.
Wow.
And who approves it? The state?
The state.
Everything goes to the state.
Goes to the state. We have, Theresa and I have another meeting tomorrow at nine AM that hopefully they'll give us some guidance on what we can do with it. And staffing, I mean, you, you can't pay your current staff. You can add positions, but what do you do when the money's gone? You're gonna be cutting all these people loose. It's not very.
That's what I was gonna ask, you know, when you, you talk about catching people up. So can we offer, you know, a summer school program?
Yeah, we will have summer school.
Um, can you pay for that, use that money to pay?
Yep, we pay the staff to teach it. We'll pay for transportation with it. When we bring in interventionists, I'm gonna use it for what I've been doing is, I can work as an interventionist. When a position opens in the district, you're gonna move them over because it's long-term. And when, and then you're gonna start whittling it downwards. Otherwise, you're gonna.
Still not a very big piece of your pie, though. I mean.
It's a hundred and fifty thousand a year.
I know, but I'm just saying.
I know, but you're not gonna hit twenty percent of it.
Yeah.
You do it for three years, you're still under the twenty percent. You're gonna have to do a big project. It's just a matter of what they'll allow you to do.
Listen, we need a new school.
You don't have enough money?
I know.
That's kind of what I would look at is what can you do to replace an expenditure that you're going to need? I looked at, because this is all ventilation. We have to put ventilation up here. It doesn't follow the Davis Bacon rules, because it was bid before the project. So you can't go back. I, I, Theresa and I worked on trying to separate out the bills for that, but you can't do it because it was, first of all, it was planned before March of last year, and it didn't follow the Davis Bacon. So you can't do it.
So could you, with the ventilation, could you add like even for the gym, let's say, add a different ventilation system?
I don't know if you can do different. If it didn't have ventilation, you could add ventilation to it.
Okay.
So yes, that's, but if you do that and that wasn't in your plans, you're, you're not saving money anywhere else. That's why you gotta, you gotta sit out and see what it is.
Yeah.
Because we know that we're gonna have to do something for, for growth at the high school area. So you, can you fix something now that's gonna leave money later that you can use when you're trying to do some bottom type stuff? And the middle school exterior needs help. We have some projects we can fit into.
Fingers crossed.
That's all I have. Does anybody have questions for me?
School year's flying by.
It is. We've, our next one.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Josh, what do you have to do to kill it?